The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to January, the regular council meeting of January 23rd. I'll call the meeting to order. Under Presentations, this evening, we have none. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Councilor Vroba seconded by, Councilor Clark, all in favor, carried. And tonight, we have Councilor Walizer, she's still with us, but on the screen from Saskatoon. Welcome, Councilor Walizer. Okay, next, under Original, Communications and Delegations. We're happy to have tonight, from St. Joe's Addiction Center, we have Anthony Kaffic, manager, and Kevin Smith, counselor. Welcome, gentlemen. Just press the button there on the mic, and please take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, and everyone, City Council. I just wanted to, with Kevin, and as well as with the hospital and Emmanuel Health, describe what we're doing here as far as addictions are concerned. I think it's an important thing to convey to the community here what we're doing as opposed to, there's a center over there doing this, and how does it affect our community? Is it positive, is it negative, is it both? And I think it's really important to really address that. And so, to do that, I'd just like to say that addiction, and I get emotional around this, has, affects many people, whether it's someone in addiction, it's someone who's been affected, whether it be a family member, or has been impacted innocently by addiction. Addiction has, I like to call it the modern-day leprosy. It's ugly. I was meeting with the Chief of Police last week, and he describing what we're doing as well, and because they're on the front lines of seeing the ugliness of addiction. And he would like to see their officers, constables, being on the front line, but understanding what addiction is, because it can be baffling when you see people destroying their lives and those of others, and why this is happening, and how do we do it? How can we affect change? And I think that's a beautiful thing, and I think it's important for us in St. Joseph's to engage the community, to help understand what we're doing. And the primary thing is, understanding what addiction is, is very important. And when you have those suffering from addiction, what is going on is, they don't know how to stop. If they could, it would be that simple. And the fact of the matter is, they can't. And I think the evidence shows that, whether it be repeat offenses, people just drinking or using or what have you, over and over. And so, at St. Joseph's, we don't teach them to stop, because they can't. We teach them not to start. And then, we teach them, what is it that's going on emotionally, mentally, physically, sometimes? Why you start, so that you can choose something different? Because once someone is picked up, once someone has started, they can't stop, and they're not rational. It's irrational. And it would actually be irrational to figure it out rationally, because it's not. It's without thought, it's without care, it's without compassion, it's without empathy, it doesn't consider consequences or the effects of others. And we can all name it, from innocent lives being taken with drunk driving, we can see overdoses happening. All of these are symptoms of something great, an illness, of someone out of control. So what we do at St. Joseph's is, we actually take the person, an individual, and understand what's going on with them, until they feel safe that they can start being honest, and we create an atmosphere where they can talk about their abuses, they can talk about their dysfunctional homes, they can talk about the guilt and the shame, and all that's been going on in a safe place. And they feel understood, instead of this label that, I'm this, I'm that, because when you really get down to it, the alcoholic addict thinks they're worth nothing. And because, in the DSM-5, addiction is a disease, imagine someone with cancer, thinking they're worth nothing. That they weren't worthy of getting treatment, that they weren't worthy of getting better, that they were just a number. They're not. And there's no escaping the consequences of choices made, whether it's rational or irrational, because there has to be some consequence. And I want to say, the consequences, whether it be legal, medical, or otherwise, are the very things that are going to get them the help, not protecting them from their consequences. The police play a vital role in that. The medical system plays a vital role in that. Our families, our friends, play a vital role in that. And then, as opposed to avoiding those, they get the help. And one thing that's beautiful about St. Joseph's is that it is covered under healthcare. I come from the private treatment world for the last 18 years, and it costs tens of thousands of dollars to go to treatment. Not everyone can afford that. And I would say, there's a level of care there that is extremely good. St. Joseph has that level of care for those that can't afford it. We're an open-ended treatment, which means you don't come in as a number, and you're here for 28 days, and we send you out as if you went in a factory. We actually look at them, and we actually take them, and we look at their, the whole picture with a full clinical team, and we look at their environment in which they go back. And if they're going to go back to a dysfunctional home, if they're going to go back to a gang, if they're going to go back to old friends, they are not going to be successful. So we provide, working with the Housing Authority here, to do another level of care, sober living, which is run by Kevin here, in which we help them go from what they learned in treatment, to see that they're worth something in their life, and they're worth fighting for something different, and we provide them a stepping stone back into society. And so, what we turn out are people that can be, I would say, they don't take from society, but they actually give back to society. So it really, addiction is the catalyst to bring about a good. There's actually a real beauty in it, because there is a real fight to do something different, and it feeds on itself, because you will build a recovery community, in which those that went through it are now part of the solution that helped others that didn't believe they could get it. And it's a beautiful cycle of life. And I'd like to say, Estevan is the epicenter of that level of care in the public system. And I'm proud to be part of it.
Well, thank you so much, Anthony. Very good words, and I'd also like to thank Kevin here tonight. I know Kevin, over the years, in our community, has done a lot of help down those lines, within our community, helping many people. And it's great to see that you're working together as a team to be successful, and I know that you will find a lot of success. So thank you both so much for coming to tonight and explaining the good that you're doing within our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated. Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. Oh, I thought we were opening for questions, and it was gone.
We can, would you?
Sorry, I thought, yeah, sorry.
I thought we'd leave before that.
Yes, no.
Not a problem. Most people don't feel bad, can't wait to get out, I'm not sure why, but anyway.
I turned my head for a second, you guys were gone.
Go ahead, Councilor Vroba.
Thank you both for coming, and thank you for the work you do in addictions. I was just, two questions. First one was, are there any beds at St. Joseph's Addiction Center that are actually paid by either a public, or I mean, a private insurance company, or the person themselves, or are they all publicly funded through the healthcare system?
They're all publicly funded, no private pay.
Okay. And then, my other thing was, one concern that was brought up a while back, is with STC no longer having bus routes coming and going, a lot of people that would come to the treatment center don't have their own vehicle, they wouldn't have a mode of transportation. So if somebody comes to the treatment center, and let's say they're from northern Saskatchewan or central Saskatchewan, and they are unsuccessful in the treatment program, where do they go? Do they just walk out of the front door, or do we provide them a transportation back to their hometown?
Great question. One of the key things on doing an intake is where, what is your emergency contact, and where are you going, and how are you getting there? Now, some, when we follow that through, let's say someone's in the treatment center, their behavior is such that it's not conducive to treatment, and it's affecting others, we will discharge them, okay? And we will provide all necessary transportation to make sure that they get somewhere safe. So that's at the expense, we will pay for that. Sometimes, a family member, and this happens, says, well, we don't want them here, even though they said they would take them. So we would have to take them either to a homeless shelter, and we would also exhaust other resources to say, okay, it's not working here, what can we do to help you? And we have a social worker on staff that will provide going into either another facility or wherever that is, and we will make sure they get there. Now, there are some that refuse all help and walk out the doors. And unfortunately, in that case, let's say it's winter, I would let the police know that that individual's left, and there's a concern, and so that at least it's on their radar. But we can't keep anybody against their will, and it's a very, these things are very hard.
Yeah. And statistically, do you know, then, since the program opened, approximately, how many people have refused any and all treatment, and just kind of left out the front doors?
We keep records of, were they medically discharged, did they, were they released because they walked out, or against staff advice, or were they transferred to another program? I don't have that data, but that's how we classify it, and we can run reports on that, for sure.
But it would be, it would be a very small number, though, compared to the actual people that stay. I think what I was originally told is, the majority of people that come have already kind of been through the detox process, and they basically are there because they want to be there, right? We all know how hard that is to continue with the program, but the desire to be there is theirs, and their own.
That's right. Well, and the other aspect of our program is, we have detox beds, so they come in, and we detox them, and then we move, once they're ready, we move them down to primary care. And so, it's nice that it's not just detox, and then there's nowhere to go. Sometimes, we get transfers from other detox. We will put a patient on a high priority if they're in detox, because they want help. To me, they're doing the work already, and we want to carry that momentum, so we will bring them in as a priority, for sure. We lose people in detox, because one thing about detox is, you have someone that's detoxing, and when they come around, they get scared, or they start coming around and feeling good, and they want to go use again. Very difficult to keep them. So one of the things we do is, we actually bring, we will partner patients with a support staff, and bring them and visit them upstairs, so they're not left alone. So again, we're trying to build the relationship that they feel safe to come down. Does that happen often? No, more times, we're more successful than not.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Fr.
Thanks, Worship. And thanks, Anthony and Kevin, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming and giving your testimony and your comments today. This is something we've heard, I certainly haven't had a great connection with your organization in Estevan yet, to my own poor dealings, but I really appreciate getting to hear such great things from you, and your sincerity and honesty in everything you told us today, because it is, we know there's a stigma around this, but you know, and I have family who have gone through addiction recovery as well, and so I know as well that that stigma's not fair, and this is a very important healthcare matter that we really appreciate that you're doing hard work on. So, thanks so much for coming today. And I encourage you to share this, share some of what you shared today with more people in Estevan, because I think the larger community doesn't always fully understand what addictions recovery looks like, or how important it is, and breaking down that stigma so that more people can get help. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, okay, thank you, gentlemen, now you can flee, flee the seat.
Thank you.
Thank you again, much appreciated.
You don't have a motion, so accept the minutes.
What?
You did the agenda, not the minutes. Go back.
Okay. Okay. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes? Thank you. Councilor Clark seconded by. Councilor Serna, call in favor, carried, thank you. Next, under Original, Communications and Delegations, we have Ron Duda and Ross Keith. Yeah, please come over here, gentlemen, in front of the microphone, and turn it on. And thank you so much for coming tonight. And Ron, I think you would like to start with a brief dissertation, or how would you like to do that?
I sure would, and appreciate it. Thank you very much, Worship, Council, and very much appreciate your time and attention on this. Wonderful to sit and listen to Anthony's presentation there, I mean, the level of compassion and just his commitment to what he does is, it's wonderful to see, and I know there's those types of centers in the larger cities as well, but it's, I just like to say, I was, it's kind of touching to see someone who is so passionate about such a wonderful cause, so it was great, it was great to be here and be part of that. So we're here on behalf of myself, Ron Duda, I'm here on behalf of Sky Viewpoint. I just wanted to make sure that there's a clear understanding. I do communicate from my work email every once in a while, that is redhead equipment, that has absolutely nothing to do with any of this stuff, so I just want to make sure that's understood. And I've, I sent some, a couple of documents in this morning, I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at them or not, I brought some extra just in case, but.
Yeah, also, Ron, we PDF'd them and sent them out, so everybody had the privilege of watching and reading them before.
Okay, excellent, okay, I appreciate that very much. I think it might be worthwhile to go through it, it won't, it won't take me too long to actually get through it. And then, I would love to have any type of discussion, or questions, or whatever the case might be. I think the ask is fairly clear, but in case it is not, I would very much like to clear up any confusion that might be surrounding what it is that we're looking for. So the purpose, person of the request is to meet with council and request that the city consider the proposal from Sky Viewpoint to address the outstanding taxes on these two separate parcels of land. Prior to getting to that proposal, I believe it would be very helpful for you to have some background information. So the ridge development has been in a state of disaster, we called it the Ridge back then, and we've changed the name in a rebranding attempt, but it's been in a state of disaster since the developer abandoned the development back in November 2015. The condo board has taken necessary steps to continue on with day-to-day operations best they can, and many of the mandatory items required to be completed by the city of Estevan prior to the issuance of the occupancy permits were not completed, and yet, yet those permits were issued. That's a tough word for some reason.
No problem.
This is a major issue, or was a major issue with the investors, and at this point, we were legally compelled to close on the, on our purchase agreement deals with Westy and Curtis Demenchowski's company. We were, we were bound legally to close in full at that point, then. So some of the deficiencies at that time were, but not limited to the paved roads, the concrete curbs, gutters, sidewalks, parking green space, playground, street lighting, road signage, addresses, sewer, sanitary lift stations, and adequate surface water drainage, and the development has been plagued by issues ongoing that I think everybody's well aware of. Of the three phases proposed in the development, only Phase 1 was developed, and it had 85 lots, to which there were 42 homes installed, and representing, it was approximately $10.5 million worth of private investor money. Most of those are from out of province, and from Alberta, and British Columbia, and so forth and so on. I'm one of the, myself and Ross are one of the few people that are actually in Saskatchewan that invested in the property. Phase 2 and 3 lands are undeveloped at this point, other than they do house our lift station and a holding pond. Following is a list of accomplishments that the condo board has been able to achieve in spite of the financial constraints that we've been under. Proper surface drainage has been established, successfully routing surface water around the property from both the north and west side of the development. A holding pond has been created and expanded on, on the east side of the property to hold water in times of peak drainage needs. Appointment of qualified and helpful property management company, as well as site manager to assist in both strata needs and individual owner needs. Ongoing repair of other infrastructure deficiencies, fire hydrant extensions, wet well operation, and a wet well operation for a pump for unwanted subsurface moisture to hit the drainage ditch. Repair of a major sewage line in front of one of the homes, and restoring credibility with local suppliers and contractors, as well as with the city. And I believe we've, over our term, I believe we've accomplished that. We believe that our goals are very much in line with those, with many of those of the city of Estevan, and we want to see this development continue to operate to a standard of excellence that both the investors and the community as a whole can be proud of. And now, to address the proposal before council's consideration. So the numbered company, we just refer to it as 220, which is the three last numbers on the, of the company. 220 has now received tax enforcement notices from the city for both 19 empty lots that are on the far east side of the development, as well as a block of land that is referenced as Block X. We received nine, I'd like to reiterate that although 220 is registered as the owner of these 19 lands through land titles, 220 does not really own them. They, we are simply holding them in trust for the condo, and we acquired them, we acquired those through the purchase of all of the properties that Conexus Credit Union had. And the cost of transferring titles make it prohibitive, so we just leave, we've just left them in 220's name, there's just an internal agreement with the condo in our minutes that state that everybody understands who the owner is, and there's no point in paying a whole bunch of money just to transfer them. So that's why, that's why it's actually under the 220's name. Regarding the outstanding balance on the 46 acres of property that has been described as Block X, we want to keep this land, and we would like to work out a way to pay for it, for what we believe is fair, given the situation. So the city tax assessor has sent us a summary of what is presented, which is also part of my documents here, and we were asked to have this Block X piece of land made into a legally identified piece of land with registration as such in land titles. I've received two quotes to do this, and the amount that it's going to take to do it is somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000, and we would strongly not want to do that, because we would then, we would be forced to now basically have to put another assessment against the owners in order to make that happen, so we would strongly prefer not to do that. So the outstanding amount of money that's owed on this Block X piece of property, the taxes are totaling $10,244 up to the end of 2023. And we will pay this, and we will do it in four equal payments throughout 2023, at the end of each quarter, and we have no issue with doing that. We're going to have to internally, within our budget, find the money, and which we will do, and we'll, we'll put it in, it basically will just go into increase of our condo fees for this year. And we're asking that the 496107 and any other further penalties that would potentially accumulate in 2023 be written off. I think it's, I think it should be known that we did not receive these tax notices for years 2015 through to 2020, for those six years. The first time that we even knew that Block X existed was in spring of 2021, when the, when we received the first tax assessment from the city tax assessor. And we questioned at that time, you know, how was it that this Block X was even created? And so, at that, at that time, we started to ask questions, and I believe in a previous council meeting earlier this, or earlier last fall, you have, you have passed a motion to send this piece of land, as well as the other 19 properties, to tax enforcement. That's what brings us here today. And that's basically, I guess, everything that I have to say in terms of the presentation. I assume there's got to be a bunch of questions from somewhere.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ron, for that, giving us the history, and we'll open it to council. Councilor Clark? You could try Kirsten's, maybe. Do they all work on this side? No?
You're the only one that works.
I'm the only one, I guess everyone come up and start yelling.
Thanks, Worship. Can I get a, just a response from Trena on why we never sent out notices from before 2021?
Yes, thank you, Worship. Response to Councilor Clark. Actually, notices were sent to the address that's registered as land titles, and so I sent the address, let's say, registered as land titles, nothing was returned, so I have to deal with this delivery.
Can I ask what the, can I ask what the address at land titles was in those, in that timeframe? Was it, was it West D?
Yeah, so I would have to go back and look for reference, but, so I'm not sure, I don't believe that the addresses have changed in '21, so I'm not really sure why you would have received prior notices, but I can look into that.
I believe what happened is that they were previously going to West D Construction, and whatever Curtis's address was for that, because we had no knowledge that it even existed, that there was even such an entity, so.
Councilor Clark, did you have any other questions?
Not at this end.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Fr.
Thanks, Worship. Were there any legal implications for us to change the name on the tax notice to the condo board? Is that going to mess things up horribly on our end if that happens?
No, so, thank you. I would have to change the name on, so it is now under the condo corporation. So this parcel is actually registered as land titles, when you pull up the IFC registration, it actually shows it's an entire parcel. All these 85 units are tied into this entire parcel, so enforcement on this 46-acre parcel would actually go to the 85 units, it would be very important to connect. It would probably enforce the connect.
Counselor Ford, does that answer?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Counselor Clark? And I keep looking at Kirsten in case her little hand goes up. I don't see it going up yet, so go ahead, Counselor Clark.
So you're only talking the city portion on that sort of agriculture, or the empty lot? We're not, we're not, it doesn't include the taxes for education taxes, the ten thousand dollars, or is it, or is it on both?
Okay. Yeah, please, go ahead, Trina, please.
Okay. Thank you, worship. Response to Counselor Clark. Sorry, can you repeat that question?
Yeah, sorry. Just wondering, when they talk about the ten thousand dollars, is that strictly the city portion, or is that education as well?
So that actually includes all the new school, library, and hospital?
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ron.
Could I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, yeah, so the ten thousand two hundred and forty-four sixty-eight is the total amount of the entire levy. It's the penalties that have proved since all of this time.
That you're asking to be waived.
That we're asking to be waived.
Yeah.
Just the penalties.
Just the penalties. Just one follow-up.
Okay.
On the penalties, are we still obligated to pay those penalties to the education and all that portion too?
We have something that we would be, have the capability to waive if granted by council.
Council has the authority to do that, to waive it. Are you done, Counselor Clark?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I had a question. So you didn't know about this property until 2021. Why were the taxes not paid in 2022?
We, at the time, we felt that, when we received these, that we were actually quite surprised by it. We had a few questions, and we actually thought that this was just additional common property. We didn't know that there was any other designation to it. You know, at the end of the day, what ended up causing this issue is because this was a three-phase development, the original contractor, in many things that he did incorrectly, he was supposed to file an affidavit with land titles to separate Phase 2 and 3, and he never did. So this was just additional land. And so that's why we are where we are. And answer to, a direct answer to your question is, we just weren't, at that point, we had nothing in our budget, and we had nothing, nothing, as you understand, a condo corporation operates with a very set limit of money, and we just didn't have the money available. And so that's why we couldn't.
Okay.
So, sorry, sorry, worship. I'm just going to, I'm trying, so you want to keep the parcel X?
Block X.
Block X.
We want to keep that parcel of land.
Okay, and you don't want to keep the nineteen lots?
Correct.
So this ten thousand dollars, though, is actually the taxes owed to the nineteen lots and Block X?
No.
Just Block X?
Correct.
And so then what will happen to the nineteen lots?
That's a very good question, and, I mean, as I said in my notes here, like, we would basically be hanging the keys. I mean, you can do what, you know, what you want with them. I don't know what happens in the tax enforcement process. I suspect at some point, you're going to have control of those particular nineteen properties and likely attempt to sell them. My feeling is they have negative value, so I don't know how you sell them, but I guess, I don't know what the end game would be, and maybe I would ask, I would ask you that question.
Yeah, it will be interesting, but that was council's resolution, if you remember. Counselor Vroba, was permission to proceed to the six-month notice was passed at the November fourteenth, 2022 meeting. Six-month notices were issued on the nineteen units on November twenty-eighth, '22. Six months expire on May twenty-ninth of '23, and then it goes to provincial mediation.
The motion, if I remember correctly, though, also included Block X.
No.
Didn't it? It was just the nineteen lots?
Just the nineteen. Any more questions? Counselor Vroba?
Nope. That's good for me.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cernick.
We're back. I guess, is it safe to say the condo board has kept the whole thing from going into bankruptcy from 2015?
This thing has basically been, yes, it would be safe to say. I mean, the whole thing would have been, would have floated into this river a long time ago, had we not had some responsible ownership step up there. And basically, this is an attempt to protect this ten and a half million dollars that these individual investors have placed in the development, and they've already been, there's been significant hardship placed on every one of them. The value of property, and it was not your issue, and it shouldn't be, that's up to the individual investors. But at the end of the day, the values have dropped significantly, and there's been, there's been significant hardship placed on every one of these, every one of these owners, and we've been pretty successful in taking care of all of the issues that have come forward. And most of them have surrounded flooding. I mean, at the end of the day, this is a flood plain that this development is built on, and we have been successful in dealing with most of the flood issues.
Sure. The, I think, okay. The, I think one of the background items that is key here is the, you know, the error that happened back when the occupancy permit was issued early. And that was a, this, that's what put these nineteen lots into a totally impossible situation, because the, you know, the, West D, the developer, took off with the money, and the, and the investors had no choice in that. Their money was in trust, it got released to the developer, and had that occupancy permit not been accidentally issued by the, by the City of Estevan, we wouldn't have this particular problem. And I think that's the thing that we think that we've acted very responsibly in that. You know, we didn't go, you know, start a lawsuit against Estevan and blah, blah, blah. And Estevan has been incredibly helpful, and the administration people have worked very closely with our people in terms of getting the solution where it is right now. But what you're dealing with here is not, in my view, an ordinary situation. One of the things that you need to address is that, you know, somebody else that's got a problem with their, you know, we're not the only people who got problems, some problems paying their taxes, but we're the only ones that have the unique situation that that accident was made. And we're, you know, we're, we think that we've worked better with City of Estevan directly by getting these things solved, rather than getting the courts involved to decide whether there's something that could be done with that. So we're continuing that cooperative.
Absolutely.
But these nineteen sites are a complete unique thing there. They have nothing to do with the Block X, they have nothing to do with anything except that particular error. Had it not been for that error, they would be serviced, and they'd be no different than the other lots. But the other lots, you know, we're trying to sell them for five thousand dollars and can't, and so why, how, there's just no chance of this. So I guess my question is sort of a technical one on it, is that the, if you get title ultimately from after the tax enforcement process, but you wouldn't want title to this presumably, because you would then be responsible for paying condo fees. So how do you, what happens when you get the title? Then can you park that for some time, that it just goes into, into limbo for a while, which would be good if it did? But is there a, what's the legal mechanism for getting it into that limbo while something gets, some solution gets found?
Well, that's a very good question, and that's something that we'll have to be talking to the provincial government when it comes out of mediation. What's the best for everyone involved to satisfy that? Did you have anything to add to that, Trina?
No. So once we do get it back from provincial mediation, it would go before council to take consent, the final consent to take title?
Oh, sorry. And then we would actually be able to, if, once we do that, then we'd be obligated to offer it for sale within a year. So we could offer it for sale as many times as we like, as the entire nineteen units, individual, whatever that looks like.
Okay. Thank you, Trina. Does that answer?
Well, I'm on the positive side. The economy is improving a bit again, and hopefully we'll be able to get, sell things. But when you're selling a condo unit, you need to be able to issue an installment certificate showing that things are in order. And so, you know, this, these nineteen lots are something, you know, who's going to buy into a condo corp that's got an unsolved issue like that? So there's got to be a way to get through that.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what we would see ourselves working with your administration.
Exactly.
So how do we get the, if we give you the keys, that doesn't solve the legal situation as to how do we then get to the next stage on that?
Yeah, and I think that's the juncture that we're at, Ross. We want to turn the corner, and I think you gentlemen, along with your condo corp, want to turn the corner as well. Let's do that collectively, by working collaboratively, and bring it to an end so that we can all move forward.
I'd just like to mention too, so it's clear, so of the, of this Phase 1 of this development, there was eighty-five serviced lots. And of those eighty-five lots, there was forty, forty-two homes, forty-two homes installed. And, and so if you take those nineteen lots away that are on the very east side, and by the way, there's, there's no road in front of those lots, so they're really, it's land. They're serviced lots, but there's not even a road there. So you take those nineteen off the eighty-five, so that gets you down to sixty-six. We had forty-two homes installed, so there's another twenty-two lots that we are trying to sell now that have a road in front of them, that we can't even get five grand a lot for. We're trying to figure out a way if we're going to start giving them away, so people will start paying condo fees on a bare lot. So I believe today, those nineteen lots have negative value, because with them comes city taxes and condo fees. It just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever why somebody would buy one.
Exactly. No, that's a fair comment. Okay. Well, first we have Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Ford.
Thanks, worship. I do give you. This is a small step. This is a small step to let these, this organization move ahead, and I would think I would be in support of waiving those penalties after they've completed their payments. I mean, I think there's a, if by the end of the year they've paid all their payments on time, then I think that I would be, I would be okay with that. So I would make that motion that we waive those penalties.
Okay. If everyone's done, okay, we'll go with the motion, and then do we have a secondary to bring this on the floor? Thank you, Counselor Cernick. We'll let Counselor Ford say what she'd like to say, and then we've got three resolutions we'd like to pass.
Thanks, worship. As previously mentioned, you had said, you know, in 2022, these taxes weren't paid on time, because you weren't prepared for it and everything else. Going forward, you have a plan for 2023. These, these are going to be taxes you're going to have to pay going forward. Is there a plan for '24 and forward, so we're not back here in the same situation next year?
There is. It's a great question. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Rebecca. The taxes are approximately, right now, the way, the way it's set, about eight hundred dollars a year. That is not an issue for us to just, to just throw that into the annual expenses of the condo corp and distribute it accordingly through the condo fees to the various owners. So it's, it's not going to be a burden.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I'll just refresh everyone, I'll go over this. The condo will make up the back taxes totaling ten thousand two hundred and forty-four and sixty-eight cents by the end of '23. We will do this in four equal payments at the end of each quarter until the final payments are made in December of '23. We expect the existing penalties, four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and seven cents, and any further penalties that would accumulate in '23 to be written off, assuming the condo makes good on the quarterly payment promise above. The condo will make the '23 tax payment on time throughout the normal course of '23. Common property to remain designated as farmland or ag until such time as the condo would like to develop or sell the land. The appropriate application process for changing the designation would be applied at that time. Is that right, gentlemen?
That's correct.
We're all good with that? So I'd like to ask, and if Counselor Clark is okay, we'll make three motions tonight. The first one, a council resolution would have to be passed, which is the one Counselor Clark made, to allow for extension of payment on the common property to December of '23. So allow them to pay the taxes in four equal payments until December '23, and also waiving the penalty. Okay, thank you. And are you okay, Counselor Cernick, with a secondary? Okay. Are we ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. The next resolution we would like would be passed to allow the tax assessor to write off penalties. The outstanding penalties are six thousand five hundred nine dollars and seventy-two cents, which includes the additional December arrears penalty of one thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Could we have that motion, please? Thank you. Thank you. Travis and Becca, sorry, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. And the last one, a council resolution would have to be passed, allowing the tax assessor to continue to direct SAMA to assess the forty-four acres common property separately, without land titles and subdivision, because it is their land. And we don't want to get into that taxation nightmare. So do we have a motion for that? Thank you, Counselor Cernick, Counselor Vroba, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. So I think that comes, brings to a close, Trina, everything that you needed? Okay, thank you. And gentlemen, Ron and Ross, I think you're okay with that?
We are. I'm completely happy, and I guess the resolution of the nineteen lots, yet to be seen. If we have a way to help, maybe in terms of common property or something, I don't know what the answer is, but I just see those as having negative value for it.
Okay. And that's a fair, no, that's a fair comment, and to be honest, at this juncture, we don't, but we want to work with you gentlemen, and the condo corp, to bring this to fruition, and, you know, hopefully we can all be satisfied. It was a very unfortunate situation what happened with the individual running off and taking the money, and I have to give you guys full credit for standing in there, working with us to make a very unpalatable situation work, because I don't know if anybody else could have done it. I give you full credit, Ron, for your stick-to-it-ness. I mean, my God, I don't think many other people would have done it. I have to say that. So thank you for that.
I'll second that.
Yes, thank you for that.
I appreciate it, honestly. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, and again, you gentlemen can stay. It's going to be a great meeting tonight, okay? On the other hand, if you want to get back to town, we understand.
Okay. We have a two-hour drive, so we'll, we'll have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the GFL report for December. Do we have a motion, please, to accept that? Counselor Walleiser, thank you, seconded by Counselor Ford. We got to keep Kirsten in the loop. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from SETPC membership, so Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, an invoice for the membership, which is six hundred and sixty dollars. And I think, Counselor Clark, you would agree, that's a fair price for the work that you guys do?
Thanks, worship. They, they put a couple of proposals out, and the one they have taken is to, they haven't raised the rates for fifteen years, I think it is, to put them up ten percent, but we're going to reduce the number of meetings to nine. I do think, actually, the six hundred and sixty dollars, we are at a maximum, so we're probably not even going up as a, as a community, because that's what we paid last year, so, because we're at the maximum, it really will be the smaller centers that will go up ten percent, but they seem agreeable on that, and we'll meet tomorrow and do the final on that, but.
Good. And you guys even agreed to do with less meetings to help out the smaller communities afford the price?
Right. Yeah, it, I think that there was, I thought that that would, they could meet their needs with that number of, with that number of meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, oh, okay. Thank you for that. Have we got a secondary? Thank you, Counselor Ford, seconded. Counselor Clark made the motion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Under written reports of committees this evening, we have none. Under executive reports, we have the city budget, which we're all quite happy with. City manager, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, worship. So we've had the package out for a month to see if we got any feedback. We did receive one comment, just that every traffic light on We did receive one comment, uh, just that every traffic light on King Street, Sures, Fourth Street, and Kensington should have visible countdowns attached. I know Norm is working with our traffic light distributor that as we're upgrading control panels, that we are putting the countdowns in. Uh, there was a, um, inquiry from council, uh, about putting, uh, beeping for visually impaired, uh, and I know Norm has a price for that, so we will be working on those items as identified. Uh, other than that, we have received no real input on the budget from public. City clerk, was anything received from your office?
Nothing.
Nothing? I know I had some positive comments, and we can canvas council on what they heard, but again, I'd like to thank council, city manager, city treasurer, for all of their hard work getting to this point, and all of our city staff, which did tremendous work. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Your Worship. Our big snowfall, was that taken up in last year's budget, or was some of it carried over?
It's so weird. Yeah, I don't know. Thank you, Counselor Clark. So that was all in the, in the previous year. Uh, so those invoices through our audit will all be coded to the 2022 year, so not affecting this turn of your budget, but you will likely see at the end of the year that that snow removal budget will be a bit over for 2022, uh, but we, we estimate that the 2023, we would still keep the same.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Ford?
Just a comment, thank you, Worship. Um, I know in 2022, we saw a lot of upgrades to our city that were very visible within the community, and I think it's important to note that 2023 is also going to be a year of upgrades and, and big, important things happening. They just might not be the facelift that kind of this year had with the water tower upgrade and everything else like that. There's, there's a lot of good projects, and they're all in this package that are going to be happening. They just won't quite be the, you know, flowers and everything else that are visible to the community, but they are helping the community in great ways. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Counselor Ford. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. Um, just last week, actually, um, the majority of us as council members went to the Legion and played bingo, and we got a lot of feedback that night. A lot of ladies walked up to us and told us that council as a whole, they liked the way that, the direction of the city, and they're, um, also impressed that there's a zero percent tax increase. I noticed a lot of other cities around Saskatchewan this year are going up quite a bit. I seen today, there's a few cities in Alberta that are going up eight, nine percent. So I think it is a great job. Hats off to our management committee, especially our city manager and his management team. I know council has a hand in all this too, but it's a huge task that we put on, uh, the management team, so thank you for that. And again, in the past, I've had people say to me, like, how do we keep going zero? And it's through the, uh, proper management of the funds that are there and making sure we apply for the different grants, et cetera, that we're able to do zero again this year, so, good job.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Vroba, and I think the fact, too, uh, paying down debt, you know, we've gone from forty-seven million to about twelve and change, so, you know, that's a lot of less interest payments, and, uh, council deserves a lot of credit for that, so, you know, and previous councils leading up to this one. So thank you all for your work. Uh, Kirsten, did you have any comments or anything you'd like to add? Oh, Counselor Weller, sorry.
Oh, sorry, we got turned off. She was too quiet.
Oh, okay, just wait, Curse, uh, Counselor Weller, we're turning you on. How's that?
Lots of.
Yeah, we've got you now. Yep.
Lots of positive feedback. People are happy to see that we're continuing with the complete snow removal, not the emergency measure snow removal that's being seen in other parts of the province. Really positive feedback about the upgrades to Churchill Park. Uh, one community member told me we're making it very hard for them to look elsewhere to move. They may just have to stay right where they are with all the amenities coming to their backyard. The other conversation that I've had over and over, much to, uh, many citizens' uncomfort, is about our new biosolid incinerator. I think these are the not-so-flashy things that Counselor Ford alluded to, but they really do set us up for success moving forward, and so even though we probably won't have a ribbon cutting, although we could, um, it's going to make a big difference to the operation of the city and our availability to meet environmental regulations moving forward. So very happy to see that project this year.
Great, thank you, Counselor Weller. Uh, any other feedback, comments? Saying none, do we have a motion to accept the city budget? Thank you, Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Weller. Thank you. Kirsten, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the public works manager, parks manager, snow priorities and dump site. Thank you, gentlemen, for, uh, coming this evening.
Uh, thank you, Worship, uh, and city council. Our landscape for our snow removal has, uh, changed a bit with the UHCP agreement, uh, with the provincial ministry of highways. So I thought it was sort of fitting that, uh, Jeff, if you could bring up that one graph, but we do have the middle one right over there, it's got the priorities one, two, and three, and, uh, our. Our management team, uh, would like to change some priorities and add some priorities, uh, with the urban extensions from our highways out to the city limits. Uh, anything that you see, uh, you'll see reds, the reds on the map, or you can look over here. The solid reds is, uh, that's what we had before. Now you'll see some dashed red flagging there that's add-ons, and some of them, uh, I'll go to them, uh, Wellick Road, uh, the first block of Wellick Road previously to Mayfair Drive was a priority one, because it's a nursing home, they need quick access. We want to extend that all the way down to Wellick, because first and foremost, it is a hospital route to the hospital. Secondly, we're usually there first thing battling the snow, because that's the first road that blows in in the northwest corner of the city. So we'd like to extend that priority one all the way to Sister Roddy Road. Uh, to the north, you'll see Highway Forty-Seven to the top of your map, uh, by the new agreement, uh, we are now going to plow and maintain not only snow removal, but to the RM of Estevan Boundary Road, which is situated just on the cemetery road. So that's where we'll be going on the north side. To the east side, we'll flip over to the east side, we're going to go to the Kensington. Kensington and Fourth Street, we used to stop at Ken, uh, at Kensington. Now, uh, the highways had said in '23, they will maintain that until we can get some equipment, and we're in the process of getting a plow. So, but in the future, that will be ours from Kensington to Sawyer Road to maintain snow and all the other facets of taking care of that highway. We'll go to the south now. Uh, the south, we got Highway Forty-Seven, we used to maintain to Perkins Road. Perkins Road now is extended, the, the contract reads now that we must maintain to Highway Eighteen. So that's what we're doing present day. Under the contract, we agreed upon the price of contracting that back to highways department. So the, their portion is this year is Highway Eighteen to Collins Road and all the way to the river. It is up to us this year, without that contract, is to maintain to Highway Eighteen. So we're doing a stretch, but we, uh, it's all priority one, so we would like to add that to our map. Another section that you'll see in the city of Estevan, and it's sort of, it's the, uh, it's the leisure center. Previous, from Seven-Eleven on Sures Avenue, all the way in front of the leisure center, Affinity Place, was priority two. We think it's a priority one, because, for example, there's a tanker this week, it snows. Where are we first? We're at the, uh, the fire department and Affinity. We think that's our crown jewel of the city, so we'd like to do priority one from King Street to Seventh Street on Sures, so we'd like to add that. Also, there's one other addition on Devonian, uh, that was priority one, and I'd like to speak about the commercial business right now. During a major snowstorm, we find it's very important for these commercial people to, their business don't shut down in a snowstorm, they're going to drill holes. So what we do in a major snowstorm, we designate usually a contractor grader to get to them at five in the morning, six in the morning. Get all them gravel roads plowed to the ditches all around Devonian, Mississippian, uh, Imperial, Superior, Escana, and Six. Them folks are looked after. Basically, they are a priority one, but we just left it, uh, as green for now, so we feel the commercial area is very important. So we stick one grader out there, while our graders are uptown doing priority ones, main streets, because we would never get there if we didn't, it would be days later. So it's priority, we do that. So, uh, we want to pass these new extensions on and have you know that, uh, we'd like to do that first and foremost, and, and it's, it really shows what we really do, and so that's, that's part of that.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Norm. Appreciate both of you coming. I see you got your bodyguard with you tonight, so we're, we're not going to go against anything you may suggest.
Yes.
And we will be asking for the motion to make, uh, that happen with your new additions. Counselor Vroba?
No, I got it now. Thank you, Worship. I was just going to say again, nothing but praise. I mean, we've all seen right now what's going on in other parts of Saskatchewan, Saskatoon, Regina, they could only wish to have the snow removal that we have in Estevan. I think the plan is excellent. The only question I did have from someone was, what time do you start in the morning? Um, their, their suggestion was two thirty-three. I wasn't quite sure on how to answer. I told them it probably depend on the snowstorm.
Well, it's, it's, it's usually really depends on the snowstorm. Sometimes we're asked for assistance by EPS to get them to where we want. We've been in them situations. There's a road plug to the, we're out there, that we get a call, or I'm out. But for the most part, Shelley, our snow operations start at six AM to six PM, and we try to stay in that timeframe. It's noise by law time, so during the general snow removal, it's six AM to six PM. That's a long enough day, uh, for running equipment. Uh, during the blizzard, if it's downtown and if there's roads blocked, it could be five, could be four, could be three, but we don't go into residential at them times. So anything near residential, we try to hasten off after six, six, or, you know, give them a break a bit, but we're done at six PM. That being said, there's sanders out in the middle of the night, uh, if there's plugs, we got to go, but six to six.
Just one more thing, I was also going to say, it was a very good idea that you had that sand pile by the recycling. I shared that on social media, and I think other councillors did too, and I think a lot of residents appreciated that with all the ice we've had this past time.
Yeah, yes, and it's something new. We tried this year, there, just the rainfall and the amount of ice that, all we needed was some sun, we weren't getting it, so what could we do is maybe offer some sand, I mean, and we might continue to do that, depends how our stockpile goes. There's another portion of the snow removal I'd like to speak on, uh, it's snow dump sites. I know I've had questions about that, and, and, Your Worship, you've had questions about that, but if we can go to that, Jeff's got it up on the, the, uh, monitor now, but we have nine snow dump sites within the city of Estevan, and they're very important to us. Uh, as you can see, if, on the map over here, they're almost, and, and I didn't know that until we graphed it, but they're almost equal in proportion where they are, they're in every corner of the city. We want short, small, short, small hauls for our snow trucks, because that blower's sitting there, each blower usually has six trucks, so the longer them trucks are driving, the longer the blower's sitting. We don't want the blower sitting, we want a rotation of them trucks, steady, steady, and so you double the distance, you double the money, double the time of your snow removal. So they're very important. Uh, we try not to go on these dump sites, usually six to six. With that being said, we're not in all of these dump sites. Usually our, our snow removal plan lasts five to six days, from when the wind stops till we finish with our contractors and hauling snow. So any of these nine dump sites, we may be in, in one dump site one day or a day and a half during that whole storm. So we're not in there all winter, we're in there a day and a half, and then we're on to the next one. Once that portion of the city is clean, we're basically done with that dump site. So that's how they work. They're all on city property, and we, uh, two are pushing over the valley edge, we're fortunate to have a valley system that takes away our snow melt, one of a few in Saskatchewan, so we do utilize Coronation, and we utilize Seventh Street Dump Site. Once they fill, we hire a cat and we push it over the edge, and we keep going.
Okay, thank you so much, Norm, and, uh, again, you guys do a fantastic job. We get so many compliments, uh, throughout the winter. I know I had one question, what we were going to do when you retire, can we clone you? I said probably not the cloning, but Haley, uh, under your direction, is doing a fantastic job. I know when you can't make it, so we appreciate that.
Certainly, you know, our guys are trained now, and.
Yeah.
It might seem like chaos, first of all, but it's a system that we have in place, uh, and it's well rehearsed, it's well-oiled, and they know time is money. There's very seldom, they take a break, they're on that blowers fourteen hours. There's guys that don't stop for coffee, they don't stop at all, they'll stop the fuel and they jump back on and go, so time is money. Uh, the contractors have been great, uh, we use, uh, local contractors. Uh, the contractors, uh, are only with us, they're not with us all winter, they're only with us for a major storm, they're with us usually five or six days. We release them as soon as, if we run out of work, they're gone, because they're money too. But, uh, they, we have a good working relationship with three of them, and, uh, they're awesome. I mean, without them, we have a dozen employees that do road snow removal. During a major storm, we need thirty, forty people, so they draw up what they're doing, and, uh, they help us out, and it's, it's been very good.
Absolutely. Hats off to the contractors as well, they do a fantastic job. Uh, Counselor Clark? Oh, sorry, Counselor Ford?
I got my, I got my light on now.
I'm, I'm looking this way, sorry, go, go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. I certainly support you, because you, you know how the community works and how you do clean snow, so there, there'd be, um, no reason for you not to accept this. Just as a point, I had no calls about snow removal after a big storm like that, and as a councillor, I'm sure in some of the cities, they're receiving hundreds of calls. We, I received none, and that tells me what a great job you're doing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just while we're on the topic of the snow dump sites, I know this is kind of a, a popular thing this time of year. I know those snow piles look really, really appealing, but they are active work sites, and we don't really know when, who's going, coming where, so maybe if we could work with our marketing team to get people just to know where those are, just so they're not debogging on them, because I do see a lot of people, you know, using them, and, and it's fair, because they look, they look great and they look like a lot of fun, but they are, there's construction vehicles going in and out of there, so it's, it's not safe to play on them.
Okay, good point, thank you, Counselor Ford. Uh, so moving on this evening, again, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, could we get a motion then to accept the new additions, uh, that have been brought forward by our manager, Mr. Mack? Thank you. Travis, seconded by Tony, or I guess I should say, Counsel, Counselor Frank, and seconded by Counselor Cernic. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, and thank you so much, gentlemen.
Your Worship, one more item, I'm sorry to drag this on, and I'm.
No, no problem, no problem.
I should be sure with my words, but this won't take long. Rod is, uh, my counterpart, and, uh, a new addition, as you all know, has been, uh, the pathway system, and, uh, so that's something new that we've been working on. Uh, Rod, as you can see in this map, anything that is green is new pathways, and what Rod's crew looks after. The items marked in blue is what roads and drainage look after, so we'll, we'll, uh, be posting these on our website and social media, but, uh, as I can talk to what we do in blue. Blue is sort of, down Thirteenth, down Sures, we treat them as priority one. I mean, if we got a skid steer, somebody's going in, in the skid steer right after the storm, because a lot of folks do walk down King Street, they walk down Thirteenth, they walk down Sures, and we treat them as, uh, travel areas where people go to work, so we do treat all them as, uh, priority one. Uh, Rod can speak to, uh, his green, and there's a lot of kilometers, uh, as I said, we do a hundred and sixty-five kilometers in roads, but Rod, I think you have a number in mind for the pathways. I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, Norm. How's the glare, Roberto? Off the two domes. I was just wondering that. Yeah, thanks, Lord. Uh, what you see up there, we just wanted to put it on a map, uh, the pathway system, including all the connectors, there's about twenty-two kilometers that the parks looks after, and this is such a coordinated event, though, with the roads and drainage crew as well, depending on what's going on at Affinity on any given day, uh, we, we prioritize where the equipment goes, we have smaller equipment, but for the most part, the priority equipment. But for the most part, the priority for parks with respect to the pedestrian corridors are the sidewalks first, 'cause they're covered under the bylaw. Then we move to the areas that connect where the schoolchildren walk, like trying to get through Pleasantale. And it depends on the, the equipment that's available. Again, then we move off to the pathways. But as you can see there, it's about twenty-two kilometers total, and it's all over the city. So, we just, uh, wanna thank the citizens for, for having some patience, because it does take specialized equipment to get in between a lot of these areas. So, it's not just when a skid steer is available. A skid steer will not fit in some of these areas. So, we will get to it a, as we can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rod. Appreciate it. And I knew you were just another pretty face. I knew there was a reason you were here. So, thank you both for the work that you do, and it truly is a team effort. Thank you so much. Councillor Wallyser, not to leave you, did you wanna say a few words? I know it was your suggestion to go over the snow crews and anything you'd like to say this evening?
Yes, I wanna echo all of the positive things about our snow removal policy. Currently, we are double parked in a driveway because the direct in front of the house we're staying at is over five feet tall, and that's by design. Saskatoon pushes their snow to the edges. Uh, sightlines are terrible. You're pulling into traffic to be able to go around the corner. So, really fortunate to have the snow removal that we do. Also really pleased to see the updated maps, because I think a lot of people felt like the graders weren't where they were supposed to be based on the maps that they had seen. So, to be able to have that information current and up on the website so that when we do get phone calls, we can redirect citizens correctly. But also for citizens to know that if something seems fishy, like there's a massive snow hill in the center of a single street, call that it, tell us, and we can fix it. So, uh, great job to everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Wallyser. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you again, gentlemen. I know you want to stay, but again, you don't have to. As the spectators leave continually, eh? Okay. Thanks again. Um, moving forward, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty-twenty-two. We'd like to, uh, pass tonight, first reading, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-sixty-six, authorizing the city to dispense with mailing assessments, first reading. And city manager, did you wanna speak to that? Just, uh-
I'll let, uh, Trina and Trudy talk to it.
Trina and Trudy? Okay. Trina, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah.
You're pretty busy tonight. Thank you for coming.
Um, yeah. So, it's just a bylaw to, um, enable us to not send notices out to everyone in a non-revaluation year. Um, so, just to send out notices to the ones that assessments have changed.
Good.
Yeah.
And the price of mail, it, it will be a, a cost savings for us.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Uh, so, could we have a motion, please, to accept bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-sixty-six, authorizing the city to dispense with mailing assessments, first reading? Thank you, Councillor Vroba, seconded by Councillor Clark. Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Under public hearings and reports this evening, we have none. Uh, giving notice this evening, uh, none. Motions from committee, none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, uh, we've had a few weeks go by, and we're ready to pass bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-sixty-two, changing the street name to Dryden Road. Second and third reading, uh, this evening. So, could we have a motion for second reading of the bylaw of the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan, authorizing the city to dispense with, oh, wrong one. Whereas the city of the council of Estevan has deemed it desirable to rename a portion of a municipal roadway located within the boundaries of the city of Estevan. Therefore, the council of the city of Estevan in an open meeting enacts as follows. All the municipal service road legally described as within Plan eighty-five R two-five-one-five-five, Plan eight-six R zero five-nine-four-four, and Plan seventy-five R thirty-eight zero nine-three, extending northwards from the intersection with Queen Street to Township Road zero-two-five, be renamed to Dryden Road. Second reading. Thank you, Councillor Sernick, seconded by Councillor Ford. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Now, could we have third reading of bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-sixty-two, a bylaw in the city of Estevan pursuant to Section sixteen of the city's act to change a street name. Third reading and adoption for use. Thank you, Councillor Clark, seconded by-
Councillor Wallyser.
Oh, thank you. My God, I was, see, now I'm finally looking at both sides, and then I miscursed it in the middle. Seconded by Councillor Wallyser. Thank you. Okay. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Inquiries. Councillor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. I just had two. First one was, um, there's a garbage can, and maybe Rod might know this one. It's on, uh, Fifth Street, but it's on the corner of Third Avenue. And when I drove by it today, it looks like it's quite full, was my first notice. Second notice was, it's quite full of the same white garbage bags, all tied up nice and neat, probably from either somebody in the area or possibly someone that has decided that that's where they're gonna take their daily garbage, so they don't have to pay for their own garbage removal. I just kinda questioned the location of it, why we even have it there. It doesn't seem like a high walkable area, or, so if we could just look at that. Um, again, it might be the best spot for it, and maybe it's good. But it looks to me like it's just there for one person. Uh, the other thing is, where we are, I feel failing, is our sidewalks are, um, basically nobody, I shouldn't say nobody. There's a lot of people who are not keeping up with removing the snow. So, people are having to walk in the street-
In front of their residences.
In front of their homes. It, it's actually quite treacherous to even try and walk through there. Even with boots, you're walking in knee-deep snow sometimes, and especially with a little bit of rain that we've had, or a lot of rain that we've had. It's, it's easier to just walk on the street, and then that gets quite dangerous at night. So, I feel like it's almost too late this year. I feel like we're losing the battle. But since twenty-sixteen, when I got on council, it's something that we've brought up every year. And I just wonder if we can somehow find a way that next season, we get on top of this right away, so that the notices are going out when it's manageable. I almost feel like unless we get a snow blower and go down every street right now, I don't even know how you even find a sidewalk. There's some sidewalks that, um, you can't, you wouldn't even know it's a sidewalk there. It looks like it's just part of their whole front yard.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Vroba. If you like, we can, uh, highlight this with bylaw like right now, or would you rather?
I, if we can highlight it now, but I just, I feel like where we're missing the mark is our follow-through. I have had, since twenty-sixteen, the same person on Third Street basically texts me sixteen times a year, which I don't blame her, because she's just trying to bring it to our attention, the areas that people aren't on her street. And, um, there's a gentleman on Fourth Street, prime example, corner of Fourth Avenue and Fourth. And he's in his eighties, and he has it right down. He gets a snow blower out there, and he does it. The property right next to it is a two, um, looks like a two purse, two rental home with the glass doors in the front, and that never gets shoveled the entire year. And then maybe the next one might be a little bit, and then the next one is nothing. And then, you know, so, as you're walking, and Fourth Street's a really hard street to walk down in the middle of Fourth Street, because so much traffic. So, I just feel like we're doing a disservice somewhere, and I don't know how to fix it. I know the city can't go around and do all of these sidewalks, but if there is even some type of marketing, some type of communication, to find a way to get people motivated to shovel their walks in front of their homes in the first snowfall, it might help.
Okay. We can maybe put that on Jaclyn's notes for, for next fall. And if you like, we can highlight that with the bylaw, uh, person to, uh, keep up on that.
Yeah, if we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Worship. Uh, yes, we had a bingo night for council. Only one of the seven wasn't there, but I'm sure he had an excuse. But he will. We had a great time, and it, I wanna just talk about the Legion, how they've redone their hall, and they've, uh, redid their, their bar in the big hall. They've, they've put a lot of time and effort into that, and, and a great facility, and some great people running that. So, just wanted to thank them for their hospitality when we were there, and we had a great evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, I apologize I couldn't make it, but I knew it was in good hands. And I'm sure Mel did a great job as caller, right?
Yes.
And they do a great job in our community. Thank you. Oh, Kirsten. Yes. Thank you. Councillor Wallyser?
Thank you, Your Worship. Nothing tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck getting out of Saskatoon. Okay. Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just to Councillor Vroba, um, in our last police meeting and the bylaw report in the open meeting, um, our bylaw officer did identify that there was, they, or we had a, a number of unkempt snow properties. And so, she had actually been going around, and there was a lot more in, than this December than previous year. So, I think she is looking out for things. I think just the process is a little bit slower. Um, and then also, uh, save the date. The Energy City X finally has a date, and it's going to be Thursday, June eighth to Sunday, June eleventh. So, if everybody wanna mark that in their calendars, and I see everybody is over there, which is awesome. Um, and then also with, uh, with some very hard work from the Southeast College and from the Tech Hub, uh, we are pleased to introduce on March second, Chancellor Eric Grimson. And he is actually a former resident of Estevan, and he has gone on to have a very successful career in technology and innovation. And he's actually a chancellor at MIT right now. So, he is going to be coming to speak in Estevan at the college on March second. And there's also going to be an opportunity to use the Heavy Equipment Operator Simulator, and there's going to be a drone display and an ability to be able to speak with a lot of other people in innovation. And it sounds like it's gonna be a great night overall. And that's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councillor Ford. And did you wanna mention again that exhibition is June?
June eighth to June eleventh.
Eighth to eleventh. Okay.
And it's the, it's the weekend dates again.
Okay. Awesome. I think that'll be a lot more popular. Councillor Sernick?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, no inquiries tonight, just a few reminders. Obviously, the big curling events are happening. Wednesday night is the opening ceremony, so let's, uh, pack the building and welcome everybody to the city for that. Uh, and then just a few other notes. The Bruins are having a comedy night February ninth. Get your tickets for that. And then also the Whiskers and Wine Gala for the Estevan Humane Society will be coming up in the next few weeks. So, lots to do.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, uh, Councillor. That is great. Those are all awesome events. Thank you, Councillor Sernick. Go ahead, Councillor Trav- oh, I better not say Councillor Travis, right? Councillor Frank?
Thanks, Mayor Roy.
I had that covered.
You did. You did. Uh, I just have a couple fundraisers as well. Uh, the Source Valley Theater's hosting Valentine's Day at Gradby's, and so tickets are available through any of the Source Valley Theater reps. Um, a hundred and fifty dollars for two people. You get a four-course meal, bottle of wine. Uh, if you're a husband, you probably haven't thought of Valentine's Day yet, 'cause none of us have. So-
We don't do that.
Yeah. So, this is a great way to not have to think about it. We'll take care of it all for you. So, there, there's that. Um, as well as Creighton Lodge is hosting their Family Feud fundraiser coming up right away, so tickets are available for that as well. And I was also hoping the city would continue, or consider buying a table for that as well, 'cause it's a great, great cause. Of course, we always love to support Creighton Lodge, so I'll put that request forward as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Much appreciated. Okay. Uh, city manager?
Nothing to add, Your Worship.
Nothing? Okay. City clerk?
Nothing to add.
You girls are always so quiet.
I know.
City treasurer? Okay. Well, that's great. So, do we have a motion to move into committee? Thank you, Councillor Frank, seconded by Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned. Okay. Good night.